I collect all your visions to the United States of America and to the holy Puritan hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi.
Hello.
How you doing?
First thing on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and Town Accountant Vicki Morrow for the second set of year-end transfers.
So, I'm trying to do these piece-meal, I apologize as opposed to what we did last year at the end, I'm trying to pitch these before we actually spend the money, so that we don't go negative and then I come and keep her money and then there's no more transfers come, so that's why there's not a huge amount on this list. But, the first one on the list is general insurance, we are maybe $262 negative, we got a supplemental bill for the new water truck that's on there for insurance, the old one came off, the new one came on, there was $200.
You have to do a water truck bill?
But there's other items on there also.
Okay. But we should do.
But it's general insurance, and that's part of the indirect cost, when I calculate that.
As long as you figure it in.
Yeah, yeah, so when I do the indirect costs, all those types of insurances are included in there, that the water department will charge back to the general fund. Now, water operating expenses currently are negative $5,200, and I spoke to Tom Neal, who is the, one of the water commissioners, and they have some new, or they're going to have electric and utility bills that would make their, you know, negative number even had and need to pay by the end of June, so we discussed an amount of about $10,000 that would be sufficient to cover those utility bills and the negative that's already there.
Is that something that happens all the year?
No, no, we had extremely high Hampshire power bills from Hampshire cough this past winter, I think you noticed, all of our electric and heat bills were huge because of the winter and whatnot, so, you know, that should cover, should be more than enough, and if there's any other small expenses they might need by the end of the year, but that's going to stay within the water, and the price line is going to come from water fees, it's not going to touch the general fund at all, but I need to make that transfer to the budget. Building inspector expenses, this is actually going to be in June, we pay him a $200 stipend for travel, and current payment has $7,000 in his expense account, so this is an anticipation of the $200 that we will pay in June on the purchase of travel.
That's a question, we've been paying Rich a stipend, $200, that was something we worked out between him and, I think, the Finance Committee at the time, so we should probably think of that as we go forward with the building inspector.
The next one is fire department expenses, now, some of these items Joyce has on her desk to be paid now, so I wanted to make sure that, are you guys on my hearing today? I included any bills that would, that we had that would draw those accounts negative and included in this, the masses. Excuse me, the fire department expenses are over, they needed some new booths.
Over there?
Booths.
There for booths?
Yes, not all of this, but there's a, there's some other expenses in there.
Are we going to see this fire department expenses come up in another batch of transfers before the end of the year?
We should.
How about at the end of the, this isn't the final.
This isn't the end of the year now.
We're going to do an end-of-the-year reconciliation too.
Yeah, which, this is, I'm trying to, like you said, piecemeal this together because otherwise, there's not a lot of money out there to transfer, and there's some wages that are going to be over, so.
Have we sent a letter to all the departments yet, telling them?
I'm sending that tomorrow.
There is no money, you know, I mean, this $1,500 should have been absorbed if it was expensive travel, because it was unforeseen, I understand, but we don't have any money.
Right, we do, he, he might have some extra money in some of his wage lines, but I didn't want to let this go negative at this stage of the year. EMT ambulance expenses, the chief came to me and he is going to have some money left over in his standby, and he needs to purchase some other items for the EMT ambulance, so we're just swapping from his expenses to his, I mean, from his wages to his expenses. And he knows that he's not going to need some of that EMT's name line.
I'm just concerned again, still got 30 days to go, end of the year, and you still have to ruin property pretty much, I go on to see people around buying frenzy right now.
Yeah, no, no, this.
Where they go like that, I'm not saying years, I'm just saying, we need to look at the bottom line, because we don't have any money.
Yes.
That's my comment.
Yeah.
Do we know what these expenses are?
No.
I mean, I'd say we kind of had an idea what all these expenses are.
Are any of those in this pile here?
No, no, he hasn't purchased that, those items yet, because he wanted to make sure he had money before he went and actually did it.
How much, is this the, how mu, does EMT stand by, how much money is in there if he takes the $4,500 out?
Um, let's see.
After that?
No, that's what, it's not before that, yes, he went through and looked at how much he would need till the end of the year from that account, and this was what he felt was comfortable to transfer to pay for some ambulance things that he needed. Next is the library, the library has just another quota for books, now they're going to have to pay for some electric and gas bills, which were higher than what was anticipated when they put their budget on which one. That's going to come from library wage line, the children's librarian retired, so we have that wage money left, and Barbara, the director, took vacation without pay, because she knew she was going to have to spend on electricity and that kind of stuff, so.
That's not what the real estate department should do.
No, that's not right, I, that was already after the fact, and she, you know, when she came to me and said, "Look, I'm going to need more money to pay for things that happened at the library," you know, electrical, not actual, but.
I really don't think it's a good precedent, and do we have any money in reserve that? Do we go toward that?
Well, she has money in her wages.
Oh, she does.
She does.
Adequate, enough to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she does.
I just don't feel, I don't know if the rest of the board, I just don't think it's a good practice, so.
It's not, and I didn't, I mean, that was her choice, her decision, you know, she did that, you know, kind of after the fact.
Were you saying, I'm sorry, were you saying that she shouldn't pay you that?
Yes, I do, I strongly believe that. It works hard.
Was this vacation she took already?
Mm-hmm.
So can we go back and retroactively pay her? Because she probably put in, what, on her time slip? No pay?
She should compensate, and probably leave out the vehicle.
I don't know, vehicle, but it makes sense.
But I believe there would be enough money to, because Berkeley, the children's librarian retired, and so they haven't replaced her yet, I don't know how soon they'll replace her.
Do we have to, do we need to vote to pay her for vacation that she didn't get paid for?
I think we should, Vicki should explain to her, we really don't, we don't see that practice, and that, find somewhere else to make up for it, that's my comment.
How does she get paid going forward? For that past vacation, how do we?
I think she should be able, I would imagine she should be able to submit a, time sheet, that just explains it, so we got a paper trail.
You can maybe put in our minutes that we all agree.
Right.
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, next time we do this, which is probably year-end, all these expenses that are lumped together, can we get a list of these expenses?
Sure.
I hate voting on stuff, I have no idea what it is.
Right, sure.
Does anybody have any questions about this?
Do you expect one or two more of these events?
Um, let's see, we are going to pay these Thursday. I get a little cloud up here.
At least a year-end.
There'll be one for year-end, because there'll be wages that will be over, but it won't happen until the end of the year.
Do you want a calendar, Vicki? I have extra.
A regular year, yeah.
Oh, thanks, all right, so, let's see, this is going to be paid on the 29th, the next one paid on the 12th, and then we'll have one, what, four am I here?
Twenty-six.
Twelve, twenty-six, and then we'll clean up any year-end stuff that we paid on the 10th.
I'm getting a little concerned, not what we're doing, but what I'm concerned with is what we don't know in the next 30 days, and I know there's not a lot of circumstances in the budget, and I just want to make sure, we're going to be very strong message to department heads, that there's nothing left, put out there, that they have to make do what they have, and that if they have an unforeseen emergency, we need to get ahold of you and explain it to the board ASAP, what's going on, like overtime, supplies, wages, expenses. I've seen years go by that we got $40,000 bill or $30,000 bill, and no explanation can, we can't do with this shit.
Is it unreasonable to ask people before they spent money to talk to the board? Is that unreasonable? Like, what could they possibly need in the next 30 days that they don't have already? Do you know what I mean? Like, it seems to me like you would be buying supplies to catch yourself up, so you're not behind starting the new fiscal year, it doesn't seem you'd be ending the year and buying things that you absolutely had to have, does that make sense?
I understand, yeah.
So I'm just wondering if we can, you know, somehow include that anything that is not a normal expense needs to be talked about with the board first, so that we understand the necessity.
And they also have the other, I don't know, the reserve fund, so, do you have anything else standing in the reserve fund you haven't dealt with, that you requested in the morning?
We didn't have any classes, there's very.
There's like $3,400 left in there.
How much in the reserve fund?
Thirty-four hundred. No, thirty-two, twenty-four, oh five.
I mean, we have, we have very little money, we have to take one fall for the year ago, and, usually we get some surprises, I just don't want to be surprised anymore when those come.
You still have some.
Hopefully survive, yeah.
Somewhat. So I don't think it's unreasonable, unless you're buying something that you're going to use right away, or, you know, bill to pay, people should be buying pens and paper, as an example.
No, I, I would do, I don't know whether, you know, whether, you know, the bigger departments waited because they needed other things first, and they said, "Okay, if I have money left, then I'm going to buy this, because I need these other things first," and so they might have some of those instances, where, okay, I have $3,000 left, I wasn't going to buy this this year, but because I have that money left, I'm going to purchase it now, because I, all my regular expenses are taken here, I don't know whether that will come up, but.
I just think that, you know, it's a big question about any of them.
One of the things Vicki and I have discussed on the board in the future, probably next year, is putting in place a purchase order system, that requires folks, once they get to a certain amount in the purchase, that they actually get pre-approval before they purchase it, perhaps going towards the last month, the board would like to set a cap as to how much a department can spend before they have to get the approval of the board to spend it.
Yeah, I mean, there's different things for each department, you know, like, you know, things you're paid, you're talking eighty, ninety thousand dollars a day, which, you know, and this is a county bid, and facilities are bid, but, you know, other departments might have, buy bullets, and for training, they had three or four thousand dollars, so we need to get input from the departments, and what's your caps? Do you have caps? We have caps, we have a lot of restrictions, and this is how it works. But it's a good idea.
And, 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 you know, you will have some salary-wise act, or not the salary, but wage lines, that will go over, potentially by the end of the year, so, I just finished this at the SAKU before I left, so if I can send this to you, and my best guess, my best prediction of where the board stands salary-wise, so you can look at it.
Yep.
How much over?
I guess it depends, like.
Like, in order to not go over, we should cut some hours now?
Well, like, for instance, I can use this as an example, where the highway superintendent's going to go over, gives you paid-out vacation, which is legitimate, by whatnot.
Okay.
So now, that's going to be over a little bit, some of his, the general highway wages will cover that, but that follows that, depending on.
Okay, so extenuating circumstance, next?
Right. So, we have communication wages, and part of this number is precedent on how much vacation and personal time they get paid out at the end of the year, and they estimated will be paid out last year, and that's about $17,000.
That we're going to be over?
Yes.
And just communicate.
Adjust that line.
Yes.
Does he put that in the budget, the payout?
I don't know.
I mean, I think.
It's part of their contract.
Right, but I think that should be accounted for in any budget going forward.
That's not the payout, the payout's like $21, $100, $2,500 based on last year's numbers.
What, $17,000?
Just the regular payout.
That's what I was saying, I think we need to make it clear, all department, is that this is it, at the end of the year?
Because on average, we pay $7,000 each year for communication wages, we got three paychecks left, three pay periods left, and then we have two days at the end of the month that we have to pay, that we need to count this fiscal year, '29, '30, and then we have a potential vacation payout, and there's only $7,500 box in there right now.
Is there a cap on the amount of days they can accumulate for which they can be paid?
Yeah, it's in their contract, they get paid, the police department gets paid half of what they have left, but I have to look at their contracts, because I, yeah, so I have to look at those contracts, communication I think gets paid 100%, but I don't know what they have, because I have to look at their contract.
Okay.
Is this a question?
Does anybody else have any, I don't know, now.
Is that the only one?
Yeah, depending on how much the police wages are, and how much overtime there is, some of that, that might be left over, can cover some of that communication wages, but I don't know, I mean, I can only go by what, the average of what they've been getting for pay periods, but.
You need to find $9,500, really, if there's $7,500 in there, you need to.
I need to find $16,000. Because there's only $7,500 in there now, we have three more payrolls left, before the end of the year.
And they're equating this all to the vacation and payments?
No, that's only $2,500, that, I only base that on what we paid out last year, because I do have the other numbers.
Overtime and all that?
Yes.
Is there some way to say, going the rest of the year, even if you have to furlough, we need to bring it down?
I don't know.
If there's no money.
You've got to have, you've got to have coverage, you have people in police cars out there, they need to have somebody to communicate with.
This might be a silly question, but are the, let me take this one, so we're talking, are the dispatchers, that's what we're talking about, if they're, are they part-time or full-time?
Both.
Well, do part-time dispatchers get the same benefits as full-time? Do they get vacation and is it?
Prorated.
So, does it really benefit us to have as many, or is it costing us more money?
I know last year, we had a conversation with the chief on, he had to put his full-timers in here to fill in, but he didn't have a dispatcher at full-time rate, a time and a half, and he was trying to augment that with part-time.
I'm not sure that's going to be very much. Okay, well, I guess we can revisit that one, when's the police contract come up?
2013.
So next year? Okay, got it. Is there anything else anybody would like to ask?
You give us copies of those.
I will, yeah.
So I guess I need a motion to approve the transfers as presented by Vicki and the Finance Committee.
I make a motion to accept the transfers as outlined by Vicki and the Finance Committee, and from the various sources of funds that she's going to take into her pool.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Oh, you need to vote too, yes, thanks.
I'm, I'm, I move that the Finance Committee approve the proposed transfers as the years presented.
My second.
All right.
Just a question, I can ask the gentleman behind you, can the chair make the motion? Or is that, no, you're the chair. Oh, you're the chair now, I just want to make sure we don't come back to this later on. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Next thing, we don't have a payroll warrant this week, but we do have a bill warrant, have you had enough time to look through that?
I would leave the heading and stuff on here. Have you folks looked through them?
I did look through them.
Anybody else not looked through them?
You might look through them.
Yeah, yeah, I think you should.
I did, do you want to?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can skip that for now, and you guys can keep looking.
Yeah.
Can I have the change form?
Sir, we don't have a.
It looks like they're here, you guys see it, it's coming here.
Yes.
They didn't even go in yesterday, or tried.
Definitely.
Oh, I was going to pick up the key up here.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So the next item on the agenda, we have two personnel change forms, the first one is for Berkeley McChesney, the children's librarian, she's resigning, there's a letter attached, and this has gone through all the committees and boards as needed, if you want to take a look at that one. And the second personal change form is for Jean Riss, the building inspector, she's been, this is an emergency PCF for two weeks, she's been filling in while they look for a replacement.
Is the administrative assistant?
The administrative assistant, sorry, not the actual.
That's, do, do we have any salary, or any, what we're paying this person on this form?
Well, that's just, the PCF is just that she's, was there, oh, I see what you're saying, is there a dollar amount on that form? You have it, John, it's right there.
Yeah, this one.
I'm just reading it from here.
Oh, sorry.
There's nothing.
There's not, no, it's not.
So we shouldn't approve it if there's no rate, unless somebody has a rate.
You don't want to.
Well, it's just a.
It was the amount, I'm sure it was the.
Whatever the amount was that the person was leaving, it was just an emergency fill-in, that's it, she's already been in the job, so you have to pay her any money, that's a second.
That's Berkeley.
Right? Jim, is that a second?
The second time it was renewed?
It's renewed?
I think it was only the first time.
This is the first time it's been renewed?
No, I think it's the first time, I think Kiborg, I think Kiborg hung up.
It's going to be me, but I think these, every, all the forms we get, everything should be still up.
Completely, and so, all the other.
We've had this discussion, and, but last, you may have to, we shouldn't.
So we can send it back, my, I would just say, whatever she's being paid, she's been being paid because she's an emergency physician.
We can make a motion stipulating that we accept it pending they fill in the amount that she's getting now.
Fair enough.
Does that make sense?
Yes, that part was obviously just missed.
So I would second that motion.
Okay, so you're, I have a motion to sign the PCF for Jean Riss, the administrative assistant in the building inspector, by John, the second by Jackie, is there any other discussion on that one?
Based on the rate she's being paid now filled in here.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye.
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 And how about the one for Berkeley McChesney, is there any conversation around that one?
I think the motion is accepted.
Yeah, I think second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Um.
Can I just have a letter with that one?
Yeah.
So Heather, before I go on, you have the motion for the one for Jean Riss, pending the, okay, we can pass those on. Then I have a PRF for the children's librarian, this is to fill the position, to post the position, interview for the position, I'll pass that down if you look at. And the second one is the PRF for the health agent to replace Adam Kinney, whose last day was last week, also attaches the job description and the paperwork.
Thank you.
They haven't started the interviews for the, for Adam's job right now?
No, they haven't.
But the library, but the children's library has already been.
Yes, they've already.
Hosted and interviewed and all of that.
How many candidates did we get?
I think it was five really good ones.
Really?
Five really good finals.
Right.
So, do I have a motion to sign the PRF for the children's librarian to replace Berkeley McChesney?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And do I have a motion to sign the PRF for the Board of Health, health agent?
Posting.
Posting, sorry.
I want to sign the Board of Health agent.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we don't have any licenses or permits, we don't have any contracts, can I have the, trying to give it back to me. Okay, so the next issue is that we need to sign the warrant for the special town election ballot question for the proposition two and a half override, this states that it will be held on July 1st from 12 to 8, which is a Tuesday, in the town hall, so as we all know, we had this discussion at the annual town meeting, it was passed at the annual town meeting in support of, this is a two-part process, and it doesn't matter which direction it goes in, it either has to pass at annual town meeting and then an election, or an election and then annual town meeting, so, for us, we're in a good place, we're halfway there, there are some rules about when you can have the election, and it has to occur, hold on, let me make sure I tell you the right number here, 35 days after a vote by the Board of Selectmen, so, and it's not business days, it's actual calendar days, so you can count Saturday and Sunday, therefore, we could have this on July 1st.
Which is a Tuesday.
Which is a Tuesday from 12 to 8, since it's a regular election. My own, can I give my own opinion? I think July 1st is a great day to have it, I think the sooner, the better, I think when it's fresh in people's minds and they're thinking about it, it's literally six days after people get out of school, so the parents are probably not gone on vacation yet, and it's beneficial to start it at the beginning of fiscal year, rather than wait a whole month in fiscal 15, and then hope for the best, so. Any comments from the board? Thoughts?
I call on 35 days, and July, I mean, July 1st.
1st, July 1st is a Tuesday. Jackie, any thoughts?
No.
To have reelection on July 1st. Before the.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? If there's anybody who's not going to be in town on July 1st, and you would like to be involved, please request your absentee ballot as soon as possible. We have a local official bond for Jennifer Day, the assistant accountant, and this is just bonding her, anyone that handles money, the same as we did with the town clerk at our last meeting. Do you guys want to take a look at this before you? It's the same paper as you did for Janine last year.
Was Janine plus that out?
No, she was 5,000, but I think because Jennifer's in the tax collector's office, she probably is responsible for much more than.
Is this required under law disavowal or?
I, yes.
Do we do it by year? By the amount, I mean, because.
I would imagine that Donna spoke with, when they dealt with the issuer of the bonds, the exact amount to be used.
Is Donna bonded?
Yes.
Well, the collector, I'm not sure if that was a comment.
I don't know. Do I have a motion to. Do I have a motion to sign the local official bond for Jennifer Day, the assistant collector?
Make a motion to sign the bond for Jennifer Day.
Day?
Day.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, do I need to sign this?
Yeah, someone can.
Yes. On that page, where it says, full-time.
Authorized represent. Can I skip ahead to the open time for the public before we go into?
Yep.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak at open time for the public?
Mr. Floyd.
From Floyd, fifth and East Street.
Citizen of the year.
That was Ben, this is now. Wanna know if the board has any questions of the annual town meeting? Generally, we have a short discussion after each annual, sometimes specials.
That's my personal opinion. I found it more difficult with you being behind us rather than out there seeing the answer there.
Difficult?
Because it's hard to focus on somebody talking behind you while you're looking at people out there.
I guess I understand the concept of presenting your, the question to you, but the response, I felt, should have been directed to the people you were responding to. Do, I felt it hard to turn around and tell you my answer when I was hoping to relay the information to the four hundred people in the audience. Is that?
No, I was talking about him being behind.
Okay.
I think you're, you're.
Protecting over our shoulders.
You're both on the same page, because otherwise you'd be to the side of the moderator.
Right.
And the concept is everyone needs to address the moderator, so there is this cross-examination and male testosterone and, you know, holding up at times, we've witnessed that, so.
Can we figure, configure so that we're on the side during the middle? I mean, that wouldn't be fine.
I didn't read, because I heard it's, I didn't, it's just you, new thing you tried.
And I don't know if we got the kinks out of it yet, that's all.
I did like it better last year when we were all in a line.
Originally was, the moderator was on the stage for years and ten years ago, perhaps-ish, I think they changed. But this is better for the TV cameras also too. That was our first, and it went well considering how many people we had. And there was a panic at the beginning that we would consider having an alternate night at, at Hampshire Regional High School.
But what happened if you were stationed to the side? How'd that work?
To the side of.
Like if it was, you know, the board of selectmen, the finance committee and everyone, and then you were at the end, so you didn't actually turn your back to people, but you were all directed towards.
We originally were gonna wing the, the tables, so you would be facing each other, the finance committee, and the last minute, that was wrong, so that, that's something to consider. The concept is to have everyone in the audience be able to see the moderator rather than the floating head of the audience from the peak, especially with large numbers. And the other thing too is what if we had five hundred like we did that one time? We had everyone wait in that side room with no, I think we did have an audio, but with no screen or anything, then everybody came in for that particular article that they were interested in and essentially they went home. But for that vote, we had five hundred people.
What was the count?
Uh, that, sorry?
What was the count last week?
Three.
Oh, three eighty-six.
Yep.
And we tried to get it all done one night.
Was it the whole capacity of the, or the cafeteria?
I don't know.
I don't, I only have a hundred and sixty kids at a time, I don't know. Jim?
It, just a thought popped in my head. It's nice to have a sightline where you can see the moderators, but also see you, so why not for everybody on the stage? Well, put, put the podium in the middle and then wing it to the side.
It's a moderator's meeting with everyone being, once you start doing that, then everyone in the audience feels they're at a, it's like we're meeting, not, there's anything wrong with that. Or a finance meeting, so the idea is that. Actually, we're one of the few towns that have the tables up front. Many towns, everyone sits in the audience and everyone gets in line for the mic and, and.
Well, many years I've been going to the, the building, been going home. The only change you need to add is the TV, this meeting, and you.
Well, historically, there's a lot where it was a time and a long.
Mr. Barkum?
Well, from my experience having to stand and face the moderator and make my plea to the moderator, I always felt it was a difficult situation. I'd rather just turn and face the audience. That's actually where you're making your case, is to be the people in the audience.
Yeah.
He knows what I'm gonna say, so.
But I understand what he's trying to say.
Right.
Stop the confrontations, and that's having anything ultimately hard.
And the training and even in the town meeting time, it addresses everyone, faces the moderator, it takes you out, it takes someone's name out, it sort of personalizes. And they can get out of him.
Mr. Barkum?
I disagree with the chief. I think that the more you have people facing the audience, the more you have people, speakers tend to do indulge in all kinds of rhetorical tricks. Back to the audience with the mic, they can hear you. You can be verbally rhetorical as, as much as you want, but you're facing the moderator. I, I think that's.
Are you guys talking about what? Are you guys talking?
Not yet. But every hearing I've conducted, every hearing I've appeared in, you address the hearing officer, you address the judge, and it's never been colloquy between the people in the audience and, and the speaker. So, I mean, I, I think what we're doing is proper.
So, you have to agree.
Yeah.
Jackie?
But I'm just curious, Robert, how did you feel about being up on the stage? Was it easier to see people and find people with their hand?
It, it really was. I, I felt more in control than, than the twenty-two other town meetings I've been in. I was able to see people, I was able to see the hands, and the idea is to moderate, facilitate the meeting. And so, the more efficiency for the moderator, the better, and it seems to flow and, and seems to work.
I think, I just wanna comment on, on your comment, because he said you can see the hands better, but I think what you were missing is us in that row. And I know Liz had a hand of a couple, perhaps, trying to get attention, but you were viewing over her, which rightfully, up there, you can't see her. And I think that was one of the issues, and we had to go back and try to, so I think it was very difficult.
Well, I think, based on what John's saying, is that what the original concept was, wing the tables. Yep, yeah, good.
Heather?
Thank you. So, one of my suggestions would be that, you know, if you want the elevated piece, so you can see more people, Robert, that's fine. But the concern I had was with the huge number of population that showed up, I was concerned we didn't have enough leaflets to hand out. And the pull-down screen, as you know, the projector screen, was right where you were standing, so we would've had to move you completely off the stage and rearrange things at the last minute. I think going forward, we need to always be prepared for that possibility, that, you know, we're gonna have to pull down the screen and we're gonna have to project the articles on the screen. We need to be prepared for the alternatives of having five hundred people show up. We may only have forty, or we may have five hundred. We don't know how many we're gonna have. Having you on the stage and blocking the projector is a huge issue with being able to accommodate everyone. We can't just go, you know, especially in the financial crisis room. We can't just go to the store or go to the printer and be like, okay, we're gonna print five hundred of these just to make sure we have enough, because we don't have access to the screen. It's easier and more physically responsible of us to say, well, the maximum number we usually get is about one fifty, that will usually cover it, but for some reason, if we get five hundred, we can pull the projector screen and we're good to go. If you're concerned about being elevated and needing to see enough, sometimes they have like those bleacher, like the flag forest things that you can utilize to elevate you.
I mean, interruption. Paul and I've already, we've already talked about this, and the concept is if and when we do need it, it will be for that finance article. The moderator can have a portable mic and send, walk, work the stage, so that's no problem.
But it wouldn't, in situations where we have that population, it wouldn't just be for the finance article. It could likely be for the whole thing, because people aren't gonna wanna sit there and listen to thirty-two plus articles. They're gonna wanna see what they're looking at.
There's never a need to project anything but figures.
I was gonna say, I think that we probably will know ahead of time if there's gonna be something that will draw a lot of people, at which point, yes, we need to be prepared, but, you know, we'll know ahead of time.
And you should also, you know, through the live number, that second rule.
Right. Mr. Barkum?
I was about to suggest a riser.
Yes. Yeah, and we have those, so I think that.
And the reason, I think the reason to keep the screen clear is especially if you're expecting some outsider to make a presentation, somebody from P V P C or, or somebody who's contracted to do something for the town and may have a PowerPoint presentation, no matter how many people are there.
And we'll know about that in the future, presumably, if allowed to make a presentation that day without notifying the moderator, so there'll be some advance warning, somebody does want to project.
I mean, I'm a big advocate of doing PowerPoint for the whole thing, because I think people out there can see it. I, I know, because there's a big crowd of people that I know look at me like, what are, what are we looking at? Like, you know, held up, oh, yeah, so they were out of it. Why not use that as a process of annual town meeting?
Puts everybody to sleep.
Oh, I disagree. I mean.
From other, from other town meetings, they, you're, you're.
Well, I think this is certainly somewhere to start from.
If you can't get your point across in three minutes, it's thought that.
I'm not sure that we're gonna, you know, come to any conclusions about how to run a town meeting going forward, but I think, you know, this is a good start and something to think about for next year and going forward.
Great.
No, so, no? No? Oh, wow, we got all sorts of things. Go ahead, Jim.
With regard to PowerPoint, they did great, but going all the way back, I'm sure people in the back rows wouldn't be able to read it at that distance anyway. So, I mean, I, I think in a small presentation, a pure presentation of the budget at the slide board meeting, was excellent. Everybody could see the board. But I think we've all gone through the days, the overhead projection, the typewritten page.
Well, yeah, we have rows where they always burst.
It's Robert, because I wanted to talk about the.
Yes.
Quarterly report.
Yes. So, you have a quarterly report from the.
Yeah, pictures of it, we have copies, and I don't have any comments to make other than the fact that usually the area's boards and commissions are busy. Maybe another time we'll have, we'll ask the public safety committee to come in and talk to us, like, oh, what's going on there? I did have a question, maybe others got the answer. I appended to the second page an additional note. State Highway Department Safe Lock School Plant for South Hampton is on the chip. And after I put it on there, I thought, maybe that's what the boards were out and, oh, so it's, I thought it was gonna be something closer to a school, but.
No, it's, it's sidewalks running to the school. It's more familiar to have.
Okay, but you have some planning in the future to go off the dill and.
Well, we have two projects.
Sidewalk projects. There's one that is basically from the town hall going up to Extramar.
Just past Compton Farms.
Yeah, we compare the existing sidewalks and put it in the sidewalk and up to Extramar. That's one. The second one is Safe Fruit to Schools program. It's been in the pipeline for about five years. What it is, is to enhance where there's no sidewalks, additional sidewalks. So, there's new sidewalks going on Route Ten to tie into ones in Pomeroi Meadow and going down to like Park Place, and I think it's going further than Park Place, but it's gonna tie that in.
So, one goes up that way.
That's what Simon Ken, is that?
Yeah. But this one's on, uh, this is not just a sidewalk side.
No.
That's a, that's a maintenance structure, that's a construction.
So, I wasn't being ridiculous when I put this up.
No.
Okay.
Answer questions if anybody has any.
How's it going? Do you feel positive about the?
Well, you know, there's a lot going on and, uh, I think.
You have a full committee now?
You split the party.
Committee filled. You have a full committee?
No, we have still two or three open. I guess two citizens larger than this last. Don't mind, it's been very big for coming out, so if you get a couple more volunteers, that might be, might be helpful. The other thing is, at the request of Selector or Member who's at the meeting, we're gonna have a four-month report next time, so be able to get in phase with the fiscal year. I'm not sure why it's necessary, but we'll do it. Couple of them will be in August, and then it's reported coming in September. The other observation is, you know, I think the, the boards and commissions are working on the low-hanging fruit right now, and when we get through this in another year or so, things probably are gonna get a little more difficult, mostly for one of them.
Any other questions about the report? The committee? Anybody wanna volunteer?
No. I play school.
How often does it meet?
Um, you meet every, once a month?
Yes, we haven't had it since December. The public table.
I'm on the committee, yep. No, we could alternate if we felt the need, but.
I don't mind alternating.
So, at least somebody from the board of selectmen is present at each meeting. That would be helpful.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
The third, uh, the third Wednesday for the convenience of John Furman, because he meets with the planning board at seven, so we meet at six.
And the next meeting is June eighteenth, right, is the next meeting?
I'm sure.
June eighteenth is the next meeting?
Uh, third Wednesday.
I think it's June eighteenth at six o'clock in this room, if anyone.
I'd say June eighteen.
Thank you so much. So, before we go into executive session, we just need to sign the bill warrant.
I move that warrant fourteen dash forty-eight, five twenty-nine, fourteen, anybody, anyone thousand nine hundred and sixty-four, anyone's touch, uh, you can ask your questions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? We are going to move into executive session. Following executive session, we will come back into open session. I expect this will last somewhere between five and fifteen minutes, twenty minutes?
Then tell on Charlie.
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Number six, to consider the purchase and exchange lease or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. We'll accept a motion, a roll call vote.
Martin, yay?
Paul tonight?